I'm gonna call to order the special meeting of the Jackson City Council. Today's date is September 30th, 2025. The time is currently 1:59 PM. We are one minute early, but I think it's important for us to go ahead and get these proceedings started. For each candidate, can we close the door, please? I just asked the Fire Marshal to enforce the law. It seems like more JFD is coming into the room. For each candidate coming forth for confirmation, I want to ask that you please sit in their seat. We're not gonna have you standing at the podium. Sit in the hot seat, okay? Colleagues, what I would like to do is take this as usual, do the first round of questions. If necessary, then we'll go for a second round, okay? First up... I think we need a CEO first. Let's go with item number two, please.
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Peter Taberson as the Chief Administrative Officer for the City of Jackson, Mississippi.
What's up, move.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in properly, second. Colleagues, again, we're gonna go ahead and start with Ward One. Whatever questions you have, please go ahead and just try to get them out. We'll give you some leeway for some follow-ups if necessary. I do think we are familiar with Mr. Taberson and his work and his institutional knowledge. And so, you know, we have quite a few today, including the judges that were added. And so, if we can get through this as quickly as possible, and the people in the lobby not be so rude, we can get through with this process. Alright, questions of Ward One, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, um, Mr. Taberson, I've got a brief here, a bio of you. But rather than try to read all this, I'd prefer if you could give me the highlights of your bio that you think qualifies you for the job that the mayor has nominated you for.
Thank you, Councilman Foot. Thank you, President Griselle, Vice President Hartley. From an education standpoint, I'm a graduate of Tubaloo College, University of Minnesota Law School, and I studied public policy and economics at Princeton as a Sloan Fellow. From work experience, I have served as the city's litigation counsel, the city attorney, the Heinz County Board Attorney, Heinz County Court Judge, and for 23 years, I have served on the Mississippi Board of Bar Admissions as appointed by the Supreme Court. I'm probably the only person who can sit in this seat who has had multiple years of city experience in the city of Jackson, county experience in Heinz County, and state experience through bar admissions and the Supreme Court. My role in bar admissions has largely been as a board member, though I've also served as the interim bar admissions administrator. In fact, I gave the February bar exam this year. From an administrative standpoint, I don't think there's anybody around this city who probably has more institutional knowledge and working knowledge of both the pluses and the minuses of the city of Jackson, what has worked in the past, what has drawn us to litigation, and what is needed to help our citizens. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ward Five.
Mr. Taberson, I think I've known you for at least 15 years.
At least.
Working, we both work with the city, and I appreciate what you bring to this position. You know, again, as was mentioned, the institutional knowledge, right now, that's what we really need. We need to get back to some serious business of government. And I see, I certainly appreciate you willing to step up and volunteer for this position.
Thank you.
I have nothing else.
Alright, you said volunteer? Ward Six.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank you for wanting to serve in the city of Jackson the short time that I have known you. And I'm impressed about your work.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ward Seven.
No questions among my easiest votes yet on council.
Alright, Ward Three.
Mr. President, I just have a statement. I got to vote against Mr. Taberson.
We got 10 of them today.
Well, I'm gonna vote for him, dude. He's a, he's a great man. He earned on in my career when I went to the Board of Supervisors. He was one of the city attorneys. I asked him, would he consider coming to Heinz County to keep us out of jail? And he came to Heinz County, did a wonderful job, kept us out of jail, and I came back to the city. And his knowledge is one, he's gonna give you what the law says, and he's not gonna sugarcoat it. And I'm more than happy to vote for Peter Taberson. Thank you.
Alright, and I have no reservations also. Here, is there anything else that we need to get out today? Alright, do we need another round of questions? Alright, hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Taberson's candidacy for CEO? Six-zero, good job. Thank you.
Mr. Griselle.
Congratulations. And Mr. Taberson, if you could, let us know who you have in the chambers with you today.
Thank you very much. I have my wife of 30-something years.
Thirty-something.
Lisa Momon-Moorehead, the former Lisa Momon-Moorehead, Taberson is here. I can't tell 30 how many, 'cause I can't tell her age. And I also have my daughter Nina Taberson, who has recently graduated with her Masters in International Business. During my time in public service, my wife has largely left my public service to me and not sought to interfere or have knowledge of how the government operates. But I truly could not have done the things I have done in my career without her and without the support of my family. Councilman Hartley, I'd be remiss at this moment if I also didn't mention my late mother, who attended church with you at Pearl Street AME in the 90s until she couldn't attend church anymore. I feel the spirit of her looking down as well. Thank you. As I've said before, there are eight of you who make governing decisions in this city. And I look forward to carrying out in the most efficient manner possible the policy and budgeting directives that the eight of you make. Thank you.
Thank you. If, Mr. Taberson, they wanna see your family. You call their name, but they wanna see your family. Let's let us see your family.
I also say, 'cause she's not here, but I say it every time, I have the best mother-in-law in the world.
There you go. Clean it up.
Yeah, you know it, you see me with it, Councilman. Thank you very much for your vote, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Taberson. Yeah, you, you on the clock now. Alright, let's go ahead with item number one.
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Ray Sean O'Thomas as Fire Chief for the City of Jackson, Mississippi.
So move.
Second.
I guess we moved it properly, second. Chief Thomas, I think you were outside when instructions were provided. Please take the seat. Thank you. Alright, we're gonna go ahead as usual, start with Ward One. Any questions or concerns you may have, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Thomas, the, I'll ask a similar question to what I asked Mr. Taberson. The, can you tell us in, you know, three minutes or less, what your qualifications are to be the Fire Chief?
Thank you, Council, thank you, body. First, I would like to say that I'm saved. I would also like to say that my 26 years approximately of experience of being on the Jackson Fire Department, every decorated firefighter, I've served my time in the trenches. A proven leader, my history in the United States Marine Corps shows my tact and my integrity to be a great leader for this city. Also, I would like to mention my, my years serving as the Union President. I've been on the labor side and the management side, and I've fought hard to make a difference in this city. And I've served the citizens of Jackson for a very long time. And I'm just glad to be here today, standing before a great council. And I'm also thankful for Mayor Horn for giving me an opportunity to serve the great citizens of Jackson.
So, you mentioned the, being the Union President. How many times did you face election for being the Union President?
I was Union President for eight years. I faced four elections and won all of them unanimously because of my leadership traits.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I've got.
Thank you. Ward Three.
No questions, Mr. President.
Not even a no?
No questions, Mr. President.
I said we had 10 today, good job. Ward Five.
Yes, and thanks for stepping up. They joked about volunteering, but really, we're all here to help the city of Jackson move forward. I really don't have any, any questions or concerns, but I do have one statement. You know, moving forward, we have to make sure that all our folks feel valued and feel as though they're a significant part of our city. It's gonna take all of us doing together. And we hope that in that spirit, you know, you can galvanize our folks on the Fire Department, and we move forward together with equity and fairness and justice for everyone. Yes, sir. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ward Six.
I don't have any question, but I will say this. I have worked beside this young man for many, many years, and I haven't seen anything that I would say that was bad. So, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Seven.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your leadership. My two questions are simply, what goals or objectives do you have for the department? And if confirmed, how will you work with city council?
The goals that I have for the department is to inventory under the leadership of Mayor Horn to get the department to the proper staffing, to make sure the apparatuses that we have are being used to the best of their ability, to ensure that the firefighters have what they need to get the job done. And if Mayor Horn has given us what we need, we're expecting everybody to do what is necessary to serve the citizens to the best of our ability. I've worked with the council as the Union President for several years, and the council has always worked with myself. And I look forward to working under Mayor Horn's leadership to continue to further our department and to let the citizens know that Jackson is ready. JFD is always ready.
That's it? Alright, Chief Thomas, how would you define your leadership style?
My leadership style is based off of, first of all, my Christian values, also my military, Marine Corps training on courage and commitment. I believe in being a man of integrity, being fair with everyone, follow what the book says, and get the job done.
How many firefighters do we currently have on staff?
We have approximately, in combat, we have 234 firefighters. We have approximately 34 who are day workers.
What's a day worker?
A day worker is the one that works, not in ESD, they don't put the fires out.
What's ESD?
ESD is the Emergency Services Division.
Okay.
They're the ones who actually...
A little slow now, so you need...
I got you. They're the ones who respond, as they're considered the combat firefighters. Day workers are the support for the administrative duties of the Jackson Fire Department, which is just as important as ESD.
Okay. Now, I remember when I was on civil service, you know, you appeared before us a few times to, you know, deal with other issues. And I appreciate, you know, your professionalism and everything during that time. Now that you've switched gears and kind of pick it back on what Councilman Hartley said, how do you plan on creating a space, if this is one of your priorities, whereby ethics and equity is felt, basically, the people who are under you are feeling the love and that they feel like you have their back completely?
90% of the Jackson firefighters are the ones who voted me eight times unanimously as the Union President. So they already know my tenacity, they already know my integrity, and they already know where I stand with my Christian values. It's fair across the board, everybody's included, and we're gonna move our department forward.
Okay. We now have Councilwoman Clay. Do you have any questions for fire?
Good afternoon. I do not have any questions for any of the... Good afternoon. I do not have any questions for anybody that's been presented any of the mayor's recommendations for department heads, because he knows them best and they'll work well. I hope that you find all the positions fulfilling and make your department a great department to work and have a positive impact on the city. I pray that we do not hear any more about the past administration and/or directors and what they did or did not do. You are now in charge of the plan. Play the cards in your hand. I quote Maya Angelou, "If you don't like something, change it. If you can't change it, change your attitude." I look forward to seeing great things from each of you and happy, energized employees in all departments in the city. I have an appointment at 3:15, and I may leave early. Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Colleagues, is there a need for another round of questions? Does anybody have any more? Okay, Mr. Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to follow up with Chief Thomas on one, one issue that was a big issue. It was an issue during the campaign, it was issued in the media last year, and that was the condition of the fire stations and the challenge of living conditions for the Fire Department, for the, for the firemen and firewomen that work in the Fire Department. And the, I'd just like to encourage, I know it's a, we need, something we need to be proactive about, and I would encourage you to look at possibilities of public-private partnerships like we saw with Fire Station 17 and Jackson Academy, where they, they developed a relationship there, and Jackson Academy pitched in and helped do some of the work around the fire station there. I think that's a good thing both for, for both parties. I think it benefits the citizens who get to see the fire station and the firemen and women up close and personal. You're a role model for the community and, and the extent that you can work with the public school system, and they can help you with your fire stations. I think that's a win-win for both parties. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. And we intend to do so, and I can assure you that, that is a top agenda of Mayor Horn to fix the conditions of the stations. However, we know that Rome wasn't built in a day, and he's dedicated to doing that to help us move in the right direction, and we're excited about that.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'll just say, we've been waiting to get a new budget because our resources have been rather limited than the previous fiscal year. We are prioritizing the roofs, especially on the buildings that need to have those roofs addressed because we've been given a $2 million award from the Capitol Complex Improvement District for an early alert warning system. But we can't install that warning system if there's a potential that it's gonna be raining in the buildings. So the roofs are a top priority, and then we'll get to the rest of the improvements thereafter.
Thank you. Alright, colleagues, any more questions or concern about this candidate? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven-zero. Congratulations. Did you bring anybody here with you today that you would like to acknowledge?
The whole room.
We, we see them.
I do want to acknowledge my wife, who's my backbone.
Where is she?
She's not here. My son had surgery, so they're not here today. But I do want to acknowledge her, who's my number-one supporter, my number-one cheerleader. Also, I want to recognize my mother. Mama, stand up. Wave your hand, mama. And I also want to recognize my pastor, Pastor Moore. I do want to say I have a lot of family and friends who are here, lifelong friends who love me, who support me, and that is the reason they are here. And that's all I want to say at this point. Oh, my mother-in-law is here.
Get out and clean it up, man.
I wasn't going home.
You cleaned it up.
Amen, my mother-in-law is here as well.
Alright, I see you, you mentioned Pastor Moore. You're not a Cowboys fan, are you?
I am.
I need to change my vote for them. Thank you, Chief. Congratulations.
Yes, sir.
Y'all can go to work now.
And if I will, Council, I'm gonna ask all my people to get up so some of the people can come in.
Thank you, Chief. That's a leader. Pay your parking now, pay your parking. He had the whole room. I'm gonna go ahead and take her now. We're gonna go to item six.
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Pamela DC Jr. as Director of the Department of Human and Cultural Services for the City of Jackson, Mississippi.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second.
She was in the back, I think she's blocked.
Maybe the chief of staff, not chief of staff, but maybe the CAO can help his employees. Mr. Taberson. She's coming?
Yeah.
Okay. Your employees, Mr. Taberson, being kind of loud out there. Welcome. Alright.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Colleagues, we have Ms. Junior here, who's a candidate for confirmation for Director of the Department of Human and Cultural Services here for the city of Jackson. As usual, we're gonna go ahead and start with Ward One for the round of questions, and then we'll proceed down the line. Mr. Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. If people outside could please be...
Hold on.
Quiet. Who's a sergeant-at-arms?
Get out.
That's what happens when you let a cute dog do stuff. Think it's a cute dog. Okay, Ms. Junior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, thank you, Ms. Junior, for being here today.
Yes, sir.
The first question, I've got two questions. First question would be, the, could you tell us briefly, what qualifies you to be the head of the City of Jackson, human, not human resources, but human and cultural services department?
Well, Councilman Foot, I have worked for 42 years of my life. 28 years of those years were spent here with the City of Jackson, Mississippi. When I came back to Jackson in 1990, I came in as a receptionist after working in Special Olympics, after working in Parks and Recreation in Ware County, Waycross, Georgia. When I got to Mississippi, it was a trajectory where I kept moving up. When I got into Parks and Recreation at that time, Parks was under Human and Cultural Services. All the community centers, all the staff members were under me. We started all kind of programs for senior citizens. So that is where I qualify on that end. On the other end, I don't know if you remember, but I worked at Smith-Robinson Museum for 17 years, where I brought Smith-Robinson up from something that really wasn't happening for it, where CNN said that in 2014, Smith-Robinson was a museum to go to for the entire state of Mississippi. So, under the leadership of, at that particular time, Harvey Johnson Jr., I asked him if I could close the museum for one year. He allowed me to do that. I told him, "I will not let the budget use me, but I will use the budget." And that's what we did. And so after that, at my tour at Smith-Robinson, I went to the two Mississippi museums, where I was a big part of that. I started off as the Civil Rights Museum Director, and after two years, moved up to be the Director over both. So my administrative skills are strong.
Okay. My second question is, how can the city, city government be better stewards of Thalia Mara Hall?
You know, that's a good question. We are working really hard right now to, to make the changes necessary so that we can reopen that, that facility. I remember so many years ago going into the municipal auditorium. So now, we have the work to get Thalia Mara going. Under Mr. Ralph, we know that he did a lot of things, amazing things, to reopen Thalia Mara Hall. Now that is for my, my tour. That's my tour. So with his, with his spirit, his good spirit, we're gonna get it done. We're gonna get it done. I haven't talked to some things that I need to let the mayor know. So once the mayor knows, then everybody else will be able to know.
Okay. Thank you.
I have no questions. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ward Three.
No questions.
Alright, Ward Five.
Yes, Ms. Junior. I'm not really objective. I've, I've seen you since 2008. I've watched you as a fellow manager with the city. Build Smith-Robinson Museum into something that the community and the entire city just love to have as our jewel. Then I saw you go into the state service and, and excel there as well. Again, for 17 years, I've been a partner in crime and watched you, and we've had many discussions regarding the city progress, always trying to move the city forward. And having said that, I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote today, but not from my opinion. When you came here, you had the title emeritus, and that was well-deserved, bestowed by your colleagues. And I think up to this point, you've done nothing but an exceptional job, and the city of Jackson is lucky to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Ward Six.
No comments.
Ward Seven.
Thank you so much. I have just two questions. What would your goals be for the department? And if confirmed, how will you work with city council?
First of all, I want to bring back the morale for the team. When I first walked in, everybody's doors were shut. And so I wanted to, I want to bring back a vibrancy so that the people are wanting to work and wanting to work with the community people. That is important. We need to get our name back out there as Human and Cultural Services. We want our exhibits to shine. We want to have openings of, there's so many artists here in the state of Mississippi. So there's a lot of work to do, but those are some of the things that I will be working on.
Thank you. And if confirmed, how will you work with city council?
That's easy. That's an easy question. You know, outdoors are all... It may not be as easy as you think. But I believe that we should keep everybody informed of everything that we're doing at our, at our community centers and in our department. So if it's allowed, then we talk and tell you what, tell you what's going on, and you come to us and give us, if you have any questions, we're ready to answer.
Thank you. Colleagues, we need another round. Yeah, okay. Well, Ms. Junior, I haven't been more proud to cast a vote ever.
Thank you.
That I am today. You know, I've known of you a long time. I haven't had to work with you until now.
Yes, yes.
But I'm really proud of everything that you've done and where you've, you've come to today.
Thank you.
And so, hearing nothing else, colleagues, all in favor? Six. Alright, thank you. Congratulations.
And let me just say... Let me say thank you to the ancestors, and one ancestor in particular, which is Ruth Antoinette Batten Campbell. And we have to say her whole name, because when you say her whole names, it not only dedicates this to her, but she was the one that told me to apply for the position at Smith-Robinson Museum and Culture Center to bring light. And from there, the trajectory has started. So to my grandmother, to my mom, who's at home sick, and to my family, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have anybody here that you would like to acknowledge today?
I hope staff members were able to get in here.
Everybody came in.
I love them to death. We've, we've worked together for many years, so it's just amazing to come back home. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's go to number seven, please.
Order confirming appointment of Nathan Slater, Information Technology Director for the City of Jackson, Mississippi.
So move. Alright, it's been moved improperly, second. Mrs. Slater, please. Alright, welcome. Make sure the, the... All right, welcome. Make sure the, the green light is on, please, sir. All right, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, we're going to start with Ward One. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Slater, if there's one thing I learned in my days in the military, it was that if you are out of communication, then you're really out of business and you can't provide, you can't accomplish your mission. So communications is part, big part of I T. Can you tell us, uh, a little bit about why you're qualified to be the head of the Information Technology Department?
Yes, exactly. So Nathan Slater, and I still consider myself to be a resident of Jackson, long, longtime, uh, resident of Jackson, even though I live just outside of Jackson in, uh, interior Mississippi. Uh, I went to Linear High School, graduated in nineteen seventy-seven. From there, I went on to Jackson State University, where I majored in computer science, have a B S degree as well as a master's degree in computer science, uh, that, uh, I'm matriculated at Jackson State University. Since then, going into the workforce, I served with Mississippi Department of Education for ten years. And during that time, I was instrumental in, I was there as the I T Director, C I O. We were the ones that, my team was one that actually put internet in every school in the state of Mississippi. I, I like to think that that was my, one of my greatest accomplishments. After that, I went on to work for Cisco Systems, a Fortune five hundred company, as Vice President of Sales for Alabama, Mississippi, and Louisiana. From there, I went to C Spire, and C Spire recruited me and asked me to head up their new data center division. And I was, uh, I was hired by them as Vice President of Data Center Sales, where I worked with C Spire for ten years. So everywhere I've been, it's been ten years. And for the last year and a half, I took a break, uh, from, from work to decide what I wanted to do with the rest of my life. It looks like it's going to be with the city of Jackson.
All right.
I hope. Okay.
For ten years.
Not taking it for granted. Okay.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
All right.
Thank you. Ms. Clay?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ward Three? Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have no question. I just want to make a statement about this man and his family. They have been pillars of the Georgetown community for many, 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 many years. Has a brother, does a preacher, there's, the whole family, uh, people that put God first and treat people right. By putting this young man in this position, I guarantee you the city of Jackson not doing anything wrong. He's not going to embarrass this city, and he's not going to do anything illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Five?
Uh, yes. And maybe I should defer this to Mr. Parkinson, who's probably going to ask, but some of the priorities for I T. What are some of your priorities?
My number one priority is to secure the digital access of the city of Jackson. One thing that we have to do and have to be very diligent about is making sure that we have a very secure infrastructure. We wouldn't want to happen to the city of Jackson what has happened to some other municipalities unnamed that have happened to them, where systems get locked up and you're unable to, uh, access a crucial system. So that is my number one priority. My second priority would be to, uh, is to make sure that everybody on the team that I have, and we have twenty-three employees, is getting them reeducated into the newer technologies. As a matter of fact, one technology that we're looking at is, is A I. You know, uh, everybody's talking about it, but nobody really knows exactly what it means. But we've launched an initiative as, as effective today, where we're going to, uh, be looking at A I and getting our employees involved in, in how we actually roll it out, if we do roll it out, and how we roll it out.
Okay. I know this isn't, uh, in your department right now, but any thoughts on our, our G I S, geographical information systems?
I haven't had the opportunity to really take a look at, at the G I S systems, but that is something that I know in, in previous administration where we had a G I S, uh, analyst. And I think that's something that as we look at, along with A I, we look to bring that, that technology back through it because with A I, it'll, it'll help us do more with less. Okay?
Absolutely. And I appreciate that. Uh, it's, to me, it's a great decision-making tool.
Yes.
Where we can see what's going on and we can make decisions, um, as quickly as possible.
Exactly.
Other than that, I have nothing else, sir.
Thank you. Ward Six?
I have no comment.
Thank you. Ward Seven?
Thank you so much. My first question is, if confirmed, how will you work with the council?
Uh, I attend most of, I've been attending all of the council meetings. I don't think I've missed one yet since I've been in this interim capacity. And I, and I listen. I listen to what, what the issues are, uh, that are facing the council. And I try to make sure that what, what, uh, what I do and my team does is, is in total concert. Uh, most evenings, you'll find me over here in, in City Hall with, uh, Mayor, either Mayor Horn or Mr. Bowman, where we, we kind of regurgitate the day, what, what, what is taking place and that type of thing, because I'd want to stay in tune and never get outside of where the council is. So, uh, you'll find us here a lot even from five thirty to six, having general discussions. So.
Thank you. Can I also ask, we've talked about this before, um, but hopefully getting our website to a really, really good, uh, spot. And, and we've talked previously that, uh, it's currently under the I T department, but it really is a joint project between I T and Communications, where you commit to working alongside that department to make sure our website is as strong as it can possibly be?
Oh, without a doubt. Uh, we actually have a, have a small committee now that has been, been created to help us fashion the website the way that it should be. So it's not driven by I T, but it's being driven by the users of the, of the, uh, city of Jackson, uh, the employees. And so, yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All right, Mr. Slater, um, you know, one, I, we don't quite know each other, but what I do appreciate most about you is that you respond.
Yeah.
When people call, you respond. You text back, you call back, you email back. And that's enough for me to get my vote today.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that. Okay. Colleagues, are there any more questions? Hearing none. All in favor. Seven zero. Thank you. Congratulations. Is there anybody here today that you would like to acknowledge?
Yeah. Uh, my wife and my daughter could not be here. They're, uh, in New Orleans in search of the perfect wedding dress.
Oh, they got your wallet.
We just got to call me dearly, but they weren't able to be here because they had an appointment with a seamstress. But I do have some members of the I T team, if you all would, either stand or.
And I also like to, uh, acknowledge David Martin, who is, uh, the father of our attorney-to-be, uh, hopefully. But he and I have worked together for many years, and I'd just like to acknowledge he's been a long supporter of the city of Jackson and just a great guy. Welcome. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, colleagues. Let's go on up to item number three.
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Nick Lot as Director of the Department of Constituent Services, Constituent Services and Communications, city of Jackson, Mississippi.
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved improperly. Second. Welcome, Mr. Lot.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and start with, um, Mr. Foot, Ward One.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, um, thank you, Mr. Lot, for being here today. And the, if you could tell us, um, some of the many qualifications you have that, that qualifies you to be the Communications and Constituent, uh, Service Person for the city of Jackson?
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, thanks again for this opportunity. I want to thank the mayor for this opportunity as well. I've served in communications in several different capacities throughout federal and state government. Uh, I'm a former congressional staffer, served on the Hill, uh, managing communications for the Senate Majority Leader's Office and under the House Conference, Republican Conference, Congressman J C Watts. Uh, I've also served in, uh, media, uh, relations capacities for the state government and federal government. I'm the former spokesman for the Mississippi Department of Corrections and presided over media for disaster recovery, particularly labor, fair housing, and A D A areas.
The Senate Majority Leader, that's, that's it? That's your highest qualification? Well, thank you. That's, uh, I think you are very qualified and I appreciate your friendship and, and, um, I hope the council will approve you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ward Two?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Ward Three?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, many, many, many years ago, I had a chance to meet Mr. Lot. He's young now. He was younger then. And I think the last thing I remember telling him, don't quit. You know, stay in the fight. And, uh, he has done that. And I haven't seen him in many years. Mr. Mayor, when you brought him into City Hall, first time I've seen him in many years, but he never quit. So I have no problem in fighting for him and voting for him. Some are going to say they have problems with him. Some people have a problem with Jesus. He came and saved the world. So don't worry about people not liking you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Stay in the fight.
I do appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Ward Five?
Yes, uh, I agree with my colleague. Don't worry about folks not liking you. Comes with the territory. Um, I did have one question, though. You know, in the past, I, I believe the city council weren't able to take advantage of a lot of the services offered to the, uh, from communications. Is there any way you see us working together better? I know we have a lot of individual outreaches, but any way that you see we can improve what we do?
Yes, um, I, I have an open door, and so I plan to work with the council and each of you and, and your staff. Um, I think that we should go about telling the story of what we're doing here in the city better. Uh, the citizens should be more informed and, and, you know, Mayor Horn has, uh, committed to being a transparent administration. And so we would like to use tools such as social media, uh, to, uh, tell our story and highlight some of the work we're doing in administration, but also highlight some of the city employees and what they're doing on a day-to-day, uh, level to better our cities and our community.
That was good. That's all. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Ward Six?
No questions.
Ward Seven?
Can you tell us, uh, the goals or objectives you would have for the department?
Well, some of the, uh, goals that I have, uh, I mentioned being more transparent, but I'd like to use social media more to, to highlight our story. That's something that I've mentioned. I've also met with my team, and we would like to, uh, begin producing a monthly mayoral show where the mayor can speak directly to the citizens. That's something that we hope to have going by early next year. Uh, I mentioned earlier, maybe highlighting the work of our employees. So maybe going out, talking to someone in public works and explaining what they do on a day-to-day, uh, level. Um, those are some of the areas that we will also highlight Jackson Works. Uh, this is something I've met with our PEG team about, um, and people of Jackson. So I'd like to also talk to the citizens, maybe highlight them, do a short video, and let them explain why they enjoy and love being a Jacksonian.
Wonderful. And, uh, will you commit to working with the I T department as a collaborative effort to improve our website?
Yes, Mr. Slater mentioned earlier that there's a committee that's, uh, created to work on the website as we revamped that website. By the way, we had to start from scratch. So I applaud the work of the, uh, the guys that are doing that, uh, and working with the city. Uh, I sit on that, uh, website committee, and so Adrian, Mr. Jones, and I have already been talking and working through this process. Uh, we currently have, uh, two special websites, uh, that Adrian helped set up, and that's jacksonms.gov/survey, which is the survey site we're using during our police chief search listening tour where people can chime in and give their feedback on what qualities they're looking for in the leader to be the next, uh, uh, police chief. And the other special website that we've set up is a volunteer website, uh, when the city's doing events, to allow people to come in and, and register to volunteer for those events.
All right. Mr. Foot?
Thank you. Uh, one follow-up, uh, Mr. Lot. Some of the most dramatic moments in city council or in city government, for me anyway, is when we have public comments and people come up with, with problems they've had, whether it's flooding or sanitary sewer flows or personal problems. It's really, uh, you know, can be compelling, dramatic, and put the city in a, in a, a bad light. And I think it's, um, I would encourage you to, um, make an effort to make sure that not only the viewing audience, but people in, in the chambers and elsewhere, um, um, see the people that have these, these, you know, unfortunate situations and, and make sure that they, that the audience realizes that you're being responsive to the problems that they present. Sometimes they can be almost unanswerable problems. But they, it, it's important that they real, that, uh, the people observing it realize that the city is responding to those situations that come up from, uh, from across the city and from the grassroots.
I agree. I agree. And we usually have, um, Ms. Pearl Campbell with Constituent Services available to follow up. Uh, oftentimes, the mayor will pull a staffer aside just to make note to follow up as well. But I, I do agree with you.
Thank you.
All right. I've already seen improvement in the social media, so you got me there. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Colleagues, let's go ahead and take this to a vote. All in favor. Seven zero. Who is that?
Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Put the camera right in my face. That was seven zero. All right, let's go ahead with number four, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Before we do, I want to digress for just a moment. Mr. Slater did not know this, uh, but well-respected businessman and former justice court judge, Mr. Clyde Chapman is in the house, and he's Mr. Slater's brother-in-law.
Everybody knows him.
Tell the wife I got my flu shot. Thank you.
Item four. What? Yeah, four, please.
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Angela Harris as the municipal clerk for the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly. Second. We're going to go ahead and start with Ward One, please.
Okay, Ms. Harris, can you tell us why you were qualified to be renominated for the, um, clerk of the city?
City clerk.
Good afternoon, Councilman. Yes, sir. I have a Bachelor of Science degree from the I L U of in office management. I also have my Mississippi, um, clerk certification. I have my master's certification from the Institute, International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and I've worked in this, um, area within twelve years, um, since I've been here with the city of Jackson.
Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Congratulations.
All right. Ward Three?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any questions, but I feel that I need to make a statement. I still feel, Mr. Mayor, that the clerks' offices need to be merged. Uh, it's like we're totally separated. It happened during the last administration. Before that, the city of Jackson had one clerk's office, and currently we have two. We must merge this clerk's office and become one Jackson again.
Thank you. Thank you. Ward Five?
Yes, uh, just want to, just to ask a few questions. What, what are some of your priorities going forward for the next year?
Yes. Yes, sir. To continue the work that we're currently doing with, uh, our major goal is to continue to digitalize the city of Jackson. I started that, uh, process in twenty twenty-two to eliminate the paper storages that we have in our records facility. And so we've made significant improvements in that area, but we're continually working on making the city of Jackson a paperless storage system.
And I appreciate, um, I know one of the aspects of your job is, uh, is public records requests.
Yes.
Uh, how is that program doing?
Yes, it's doing well.
Okay. Are we, we're unable to, um, uh, respond in a timely manner?
Yes, we, yes, we are.
Good deal. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Six?
I have one question. What strategy would you use to make your department more work-friendly or work-related?
Well, currently, I do think that we have a work-friendly, um, work environment. The, I have a great staff. I'm currently working with them to make sure, cross-training to make sure that everybody in the office knows every aspect of the job.
No further.
All right. Uh, Ward Seven?
Thank you so much. Appreciate your work, Ms. Harris. Um, uh, my colleague asked goals and objectives overall. Um, one thing, and I apologize if I missed it, but, uh, as it relates to running elections, what goals would you have for the important work you do managing elections in our city?
Yes. So this past, this past election, twenty twenty-five, it was the first time that I've had some new staff members that were not, um, had never worked elections. And I want to commend them. They came in. I trained them. They did a great job. And so I would continue to work with them. Now, since they've gone through the experience and, and kind of have a feel of it, continue to work with them to ensure that they know every aspect of doing the election. It's a lot of work and a lot of steps is entailed with that, but, um, they are up to the task and the challenge, and I'm looking forward, if afforded, the opportunity to continue to work with them. to work with them.
Great. And if confirmed, how will you work with the city council?
Yes, I will continue to do what I'm currently doing. I work closely with the clerk of the council. Many of the deputy clerk of the councils contact me, and then on some occasions, the council members may contact me directly. So we work well together and provide them with anything that they're asking for. We assist them.
All right. Do we need another round? Yes, sir. This is not for Angela, but for the mayor. I too share. Councilman Stokes believed that we need to examine perhaps that pulling those departments back together again, and I, coming in, they had just changed it, but it used to fall under clerk of council, so I'd appreciate some examination.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Councilman Hartley, we have that under review. We have just been dealing with crisis management since we started here 12 weeks ago, and as things settle down, we'll get into the reorganization that we've been talking about. And that, those departments are certainly on our radar screen.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anything else? All right. All in favor? Oppose? Six one. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Do you have anybody here with you today, Ms. Harris?
I was supposed to have some of my staff members. We, of course, we're busy with passports and TSA. I think I saw.
I see two.
You see two? Okay. Jernican?
To your left.
Mirees.
All right. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Toya Martin as Director of Department of Human Resources, city of Jackson, Mississippi.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved improperly second.
All right, Mr. Foot, we're going to start with you, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Martin, thank you for being here today. Could you tell us in three minutes or less how, about your qualifications to be, to continue to be the head of the Human Resources Department? No, not three words.
I thought you said three words.
Three minutes.
Oh, okay. Good afternoon. I actually do have a speech that I would like to read before I answer any questions. Good afternoon again. I am truly honored and humbled to stand before you today as the candidate for the city of Jackson's Human Resources Director. First, I would like to thank the mayor for your trust and confidence in me. I would also like to thank the city council for allowing me the opportunity to discuss some of the great work that we have been able to accomplish in HR and some of our goals, if I'm honored, to be confirmed today. I also want to extend my deep appreciation to my colleagues and the entire HR team. Your support, collaboration, and commitment have played a major role in this journey. Over the years, I've had the privilege of working alongside incredibly talented, dedicated professionals who care deeply about people, culture, and progress. From the very start of my career in HR, I believe that people are an organization's greatest asset, not just in words, but in how we treat, support, and grow them. I would like to highlight some of our successes over the past four years. We've created and revised over 30 policies and procedures, reduced average time to fill through streamlining the recruitment processes, increased candidate quality by partnering with employment agencies and universities, launched a structured onboarding program which improved new hire retention, initiated a recognition program which boosted morale and peer-to-peer acknowledgement, conducted leadership training to 50-plus mid-level managers, developed HR metric KPIs for each department, launched new health and wellness benefits which increased participation. Some of our upcoming goals. To improve employee retention, we plan to do that by reducing the voluntary turnover rate. How we plan on doing that is by enhancing employee development paths, conducting exit interviews, and improving management training. Enhancing talent acquisition by shortening the time to fill for key roles and increase offer acceptance rates. We plan on doing that by optimizing our interview process, processes by HR being more involved with departmental interviews. Boosting employee engagement. Our goal is to increasing, increase employee engagement. We plan to do that by conducting surveys, approving communication, and implementing more recognition programs. Enhancing our onboarding experience by implementing new hire onboarding feedback by checking with employees within three months after hire. How we plan on doing that by developing a digital onboarding portal to where we can streamline the paperwork and training process. And lastly, by insurance, ensuring compliance, maintaining 100 compliant, 100% compliance with labor laws, PERS, ELC, and internal HR policies. We plan on doing that by regulating, doing regular audits, policy reviews, and mandatory compliance training for all employees. As I take on this new responsibility, I do so with a clear vision to create an environment where every employee feels seen, supported, and empowered. HR is more than policies and procedures. It's about shaping a culture where people thrive, where diversity is celebrated, and where careers flourish. I look forward to working with each of you to foster a workplace that prioritizes integrity, transparency, and continuous learning. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity. I'm excited, I'm ready, and I'm committed to the people, the culture, and the future we're building together. I stand ready for any questions that you may have.
One follow-up question, please, ma'am. That is, exit interviews. When you do exit interviews for people who are leaving for whatever reason, good, bad, or indifferent, how can you use the information that comes from exit interviews in a constructive way to make the city of Jackson a better, more efficient, and more productive in their future?
Yes, so we currently, we do need to revamp our exiting process because currently what happens is, once employees leave, you know, it's the department's responsibility to start the initiation process, being that they are going to the departments to resign in their positions. But HR has to get more involved in that, and what we're finding out from those exit interviews is the reasons of why people are leaving. It's letting us know that they're leaving because of, you know, conflict issues with their managers, or because the salaries are low, or because they receive better offers at other organizations. You know, some of those things that we've been trying to do is definitely examine those interviews and look at the reasons why they're leaving. Like I said, most of the time, employees, the reasons why they're leaving is typically because they're having conflict with their managers. We know that's, that's an issue, and that's been an issue for a while. So what we've done is, like I said in my speech, we have implemented a manager, you know, that middle manager training program for our employees, where those employees are going through that training so they can learn how to deal with conflict when it comes to employees.
Thank you. In your process of reworking the exit interviews, I mean, there's a lot of valuable information that comes out there that, that should be somehow, I know there's a confidential nature to the specific employees and all, but as, as a group, the information you glean from, from exit interviews would be very helpful to the city council in, in us trying to understand what's going on with, within the administration, within the city, if there's morale problems in particular departments and what, what might need to be done there. So I would encourage you to try to figure out a feedback mechanism for the city council as well, because it really is something, we've lost a lot of institutional knowledge across the city in the past four or five years, especially in public works, and, and it takes a while to rebuild that. And so it's vital that we have a sense of what's going on in that, in that area. Thank you.
Absolutely. I have no problem sharing that with the council. I can provide periodic, you know, period reports about the surveys in terms of the data.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ward Two. Ward Three.
No questions.
All right, Ward Five. First of all, Ms. Martin, thank you for everything you've been doing in support of our, our city employees-wise. Just part of my backstory, I taught leadership and supervisory skills across the country for the Air Force. One of the things we wanted to ensure was anytime anyone has disciplinary action, that there follows certain steps, and that's important. And I believe, I think the mayor has put together the Civil Service Commission, which should help us. But how can you, through your leadership, how can you ensure that we get the word out to frontline supervisors that when they send someone home, they need to have that paperwork trail, they need to have justification, and it's not about punishing, but rehabilitating that person? What are your thoughts on that?
So, that's a great question, Councilman Hartley. We actually currently, that is part of the leadership training that we have currently. We train those managers on the disciplinary action process and also how important it is to document that information. So a lot of times, we find ourselves in HR, you know, the managers bring those employees before us when they are basically at their wits' end, right? They, that employee has, they have gotten to a point to where they're just ready to go straight to termination without doing that progressive discipline process. So a lot of times, what happens is that we're deferring those employers, those managers back, you know, they, they get upset with us and say, oh, it's so hard to terminate people around the city of Jackson, and that's not the case. You just have to be ready to actually manage those employees, okay, first of all, because a lot of times, those employees are not even aware of the things that they're doing, or that, that the managers have issues with some of the things that, that is happening in the city. I'm sorry, with some of the issues that they are having with them. So what we're doing is training those employees, training those managers on what to do when you have an employee that you see that has a disciplinary process, disciplinary issue. You need to do the progressive discipline. Now, some things, you know, we have to bypass, bypass the progressive discipline process based on what the, the issue is. But yes, we definitely encourage managers to work with their employees and definitely make sure that they are using that procedure, and we're always there for any kind of guidance they may need in that. So we're going to always defer those people back if they have not done what they were supposed to do as a manager.
Thank you so much, and I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you.
Ward Six. Ward Seven.
Thank you so much. How many employees are in the city of Jackson?
Currently, we have about 1,326.
Thank you very much. You've already addressed your goals and objectives. Thank you for sharing those. Can you share, if confirmed, how will you work with city council?
So I will continue working with the city council. I just heard what Councilman Foot said, and I have no problem providing those reports. I will continue communicating with you all as I have been doing, and of course, I'm always available if you all have any questions or concerns for me. You're welcome.
Ward Six.
I have no questions.
Okay, Ward Two.
I'm listening to you talk about performance. Do you not do performance evaluations annually in the city of Jackson?
We do. We, and that's one of the things that we, that was one of my accomplishments. We did revamp the performance appraisal review system because the appraisal that we were using was kind of outdated, so we did revise that appraisal to make it more modern. But absolutely, we have, we do one appraisal a year that's due by the end of December.
My next question is, you keep saying conflict, and conflict is not known prior to this process of trying to eliminate an employee. How does it get to that point if you have an evaluation system?
Great, great question. What happens a lot of times is, when it comes to performance evaluations, most of the managers are just doing the performance evaluations because HR is calling, saying, hey, we need you to do those performance evaluations on your employees. So they are not really taking the time to evaluate those employees on their performance at that time. They're just doing it just to get it out the way. So a lot of times, what happens is, when they come to us about performance issues, we're always referring back to the performance evaluation, and we, we review that performance evaluation, and we say, you're saying that this employee needs to be terminated, but yet and still, with this performance evaluation that was just done on them, they have a 3.0 on all of the questions.
My next question is, and it's not against you, if we know this is a problem and we know what's going on, how are you going to fix it? Because it does not sound like it's being fixed if you know what's going on and we are in this situation.
So it's continuous training, that, that's what we have found that we needed to, we need to do. We have to continue training our managers and training our employees on what is expected, what should they be doing when it comes to employees dealing with performance, and continue letting them know, because we do have strategic planning meetings with our departments as well, where we talk about performance evaluation. So it's just a, a thing at this point, Councilwoman, where we just have to continue doing continuous education and training when it comes to that.
And my last question, who performs the performance reviews on middle management, since you're saying middle, middle management has the problem?
The directors.
The direct, so you?
Yes. The directors of each department.
Got it.
All right, thank you. Any more questions from anyone else? All right. You know, I've been very forward about how I felt, and, and I think it's pretty clear that I want to support this mayor and I want him to be successful. But I am completely against this nomination. Last week, I provided council members with a myriad of reasons why, and I also presented a draft of a resolution for a vote of no confidence, which may come at some point. And so just having said that, because again, I've been very upfront about it, I am completely against this nomination, and I would not support it. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Oppose? Five two, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to introduce the persons that are here to support me, that know about my integrity and about my skill set, and I appreciate them being here today. I have my team from HR who's here today to support me. Also, I have my son, who is a fireman. I think he's outside somewhere. Oh, there he is. Thank you. And also my best friend, who is here from Huntsville, Stacy Willis, who is here to support me as well. Thank you.
All right. Do we need a city attorney first or a public works director? Well, we know the city attorney. Let's, let's deal with him.
Order confirming appointment of Drew M. Martin, city attorney for the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
So moved.
All right. About to say, it's been moved improperly second. All right, we're going to go ahead and start with Ward One.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Martin, for being here today. The, can you give us in three minutes or less why you are the qualified to be the city attorney?
I had a feeling you were going to ask me that. So first, I'm a lawyer. I could go through my resume with you, but you've all got my resume, and I don't see a need to do that. I've worked at big firms, I've worked at small firms. I think why I'm qualified to be city attorney is because I care about the city, and I want to see what this government wants to get done, and I want to help it get it done. And that's for this mayor, and that's for this city council. And, you know, it's easy to use the law as a way of saying no and telling people what they can't do. It's harder to use that toolset to figure out how to get something done that is harder to get done. And I think that I've shown that I will do that and can do that with the help of some very capable and hard-working people in our department.
Thank you, sir. The, the, the journey, your legal journey here at the city of Jackson has been quite, you know, amazing, and the fact that you're still standing and still working for the city is, is a mark in your favor, I believe. But the, it's one of those, the last three or four years in, in the legal front has been one that added a lot of dysfunction to the city and kept us from accomplishing a lot of stuff we could have accomplished. And so what can we do to keep the legal system, get, get out of the entanglement of the legal system so we can actually spend more of our time working for the citizens of Jackson and their needs?
Well, let me address-
Well, let me address that this way. The legal entanglements you're speaking of are not legal entanglements for anybody that's in this room, and they're not legal entanglements that have been caused by anybody in this room. So, I think that we are separated from that, and our job is to focus on what we can get done and to keep moving forward. But I don't think anything, nobody in this room today is gonna hold us back from getting things done.
Okay. Thank you. That's all questions for right now.
Thank you. Ward three.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, I've supported the view of a firm. By state law, if we have a legal department, we can't have a firm. And I do not want to seem like I'm not supporting you and what you're doing with the city legal department, but the issues I'm concerned about, like the firm would be the right direction, number one. Lifts the road, red road, issue, the train. We've heard from legal person, mayors, and everybody else that the VIDOC would be open, but it's still closed. We haven't gone to court yet. It shouldn't take this long to get in court and let a judge make a determination. And if it's against the city, that's what the appellate, the appellate process is about. But to sit back, if we do nothing, these citizens are dying, there's no relief, emergency vehicles can't get to people, family members are divided, and we still not in court. I'm concerned about that.
Councilman, there was a suit that was filed about that against the railroad. It was filed before I became city attorney. The pleadings were all filed and closed before I became city attorney. I have briefed the council on it previously when it was pending. There was a ruling against the city on that some time ago. Now, having said that, I would suggest two things on that particular issue. One is, I think ultimately, it's going to be a public works issue to find another way through there because the railroad fought it so hard. And number two is, if there is an outside firm that you think we should work with to try to look at that in another way or find another way through it, I'll talk to anybody. I don't, I don't ever pretend like I've got all the answers or I know how to get everything done, but I do believe I can get out and talk to people that can, and oftentimes, have more knowledge than I do about something. And if we can find a way to do it, all answers are on the table as far as I'm concerned.
You know, most people from Mayor Johnson's administration, Robert Wall was over constituency services, they're still alive. The railroad approached the city, and they told the city they want to make renovations, and they will pay for it. Different lawyers, that's why I said we need a firm, different people involved, next thing we know, the whole thing closed down. Frank Melton died before time, he would open it back up. Other mayors lost seats, and they let it go away. So, between here and there, some of these mayors or someone could inform the people in ward three and four that the lawsuit was gone, because we kept bringing it up, we put it on the agenda. But that's one issue. The second issue is JASCO. They selling crack, they selling spice, they destroying children, destroying neighborhoods. The city been to court, they said they had to close. They between seven or eight churches, but yet they still open. Now, we talked to different lawyers, high in the world, they still open on appeal, because normally on appeal, you got shut down until a ruling come from a judge. But we're saying, somebody in legal got to care about the poor people, like they do the police.
Councilman, I care about everybody in the city, and I want to fight for everybody I can fight for. If you'll give me until the end of this meeting, I'll get you an update on JASCO, because I asked recently about it. And I just don't recall, as I sit here, exactly where it was. In particular, I've been to working with Chief Wade on it because there were some police issues there. And I apologize, I'm a little blanked right now on what the last conversation I had with, but it was with Chief Wade, and it was not long before he resigned. I will get you some information about that today.
Now, the question I'm asking, I do not want to make it seem as though you over the legal department at the time.
I understand.
You know, I know you were not.
Sure.
And I know we've had some lawyers that did not meet qualifications. But in old days in Jackson, when Terry Stone and others were lawyers, these kind of things would happen to Jackson. Closing the VIDOC through a railroad that made a promise that they were just gonna renovate, didn't get approval from the city council and those kind of things. Dope places just open and selling dope in the neighborhoods, destroying children's lives. You got 11, 12-year-olds going behind houses smoking dope now. You can't allow these to happen in these areas. Dr. Slater, who I knew his family, support your father, so I'm gonna support you on this. I still believe we need a firm, but I support your nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Ward five.
Yes, Mr. Martin. First of all, thanks for you and your staff and everything you do. I have somewhat of a similar, and I will support you, by the way. But I have a similar concern, and that is our ability to use legal methods to improve the quality of life of our people. And to that end, I'm wondering, I recently met with you, your staff, Secretary of State's Office, representative, et cetera, to examine laws. That's one of the direction I think we need to improve in. These were laws concerning blighted properties and our ability to get folks to comply. And so, I'd be interested in, in maybe some steps that you all could do from a legal standpoint to make sure that we have our knife sharpened when it comes to these issues affecting our qualities of life, whether it's a small flexible group of lawyers or whatever, but I think it needs to be a priority. And I'm sure, I mean, you know, we don't supervise or anything like that, but we hear the complaints, we hear the issues, and a lot of times, there is a legal remedy. And I like for us to be a little bit more nimble, a little bit more flexible in applying it so we can get some results, so we can't tell the folks that there's nothing we can do.
No, look, I agree with that, and let me say this. So, I don't always know what the issues are in every community, right? As a lawyer, I rely on the people I work with, the people I live around, and the people that are in this room to tell me what issues they want to see addressed. And so, I would like to point out that when, when, when specific issues have come up, whether it was Hotel O, whether it was a club, whether it was a shooting, and people said, "Look, we need to take action," I think we've taken that action, we've taken it quickly and decisively and successfully. But to your specific point, I have a meeting tomorrow with the lawyers that were in the room with you last week or two weeks ago when we had the meeting you're referring to, in order to go over the ideas that we've been working on. Councilman Parkinson's nodding a lot over here, he has very similar issues that he's met with us about as well. We are going to help find a way to speed up the process of moving along to blighted properties. We're gonna find a legal way to do it. If it requires legislation, whether that's municipal legislation or state legislation, we're going to push for it, and we're gonna help get it passed.
Okay, and to that note, one of the things you mentioned, perhaps in the future, we can look at having some liaison with the, with the clerk of council or with the city council office. I think at one time, at one time, we had a paralegal. Sometimes there are legal questions that come up, and it would be helpful if we had, you know, someone close by that could...
We're in a position now, we can absolutely do that. We can have somebody with, that's a direct line, absolutely.
Okay.
And have them here, have them how you want. Look, I didn't know this when I first was appointed, so let me say this too. Of all the people that you're talking to today, there's only one of them actually that reports not just to the mayor but to the city council as well, and that's my position. City attorney's job is not just to, is not just to report to the mayor, it's to report to this council. And I will say that when I was sitting, where Mr. Tayweson's sitting right now about 18 months ago, what I told you then, in fact, I told you specifically, because you asked the question, if I recall right, that I wanted to regain the trust of the council in the office of the city attorney. I won't say that I've done that or not, that's for y'all to decide, but I will continue to work on that because it's necessary, and it was a broken situation when I came into it.
Well, I appreciate it, and yes, I have seen improvements, and we certainly appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ward six.
No comments.
All right, ward seven.
Thank you. You've addressed directly how you will work with council, so I appreciate that. And you've addressed a little bit of the goals and objectives, but I'm just wondering if you can state specifically what goals and objectives you would have for the department?
Real broadly, we have a couple of basic goals, which is to try to keep the city out of trouble, and when the city gets into trouble, to get it out of that trouble. And I know that sounds glib, but I mean it. We don't always know what the issue is going to be, but we know that we have to address it once it comes up. Second to that, we want to be as efficient as we can be, and I think we have shown strides in this in terms of just the everyday business of the city, getting things processed from the departments to the city council more quickly. That doesn't mean we're perfect, we're far from it, but it's a, it is a stated goal that we speak within our office, and we're gonna continue to do that. And then the last is, I will say that when, to refer back to 18 months ago, when I was first considering whether this was a good idea to step into this position or not, I reached out to an attorney that had done this job for a long time, and he gave me some very good advice that I've tried to take to heart, which is, give my advice, right? But ultimately, my job is what the governing authorities want to do, my job is to help them get it done, and we're gonna continue to work on that.
Mr. Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got one follow-up to the, to the discussion that you had with Mr. Harley regarding the blight issue and the challenges the city faces with blight and the legal parts of that. We had another anecdote that came up in the last week or so with the Virginia College Building.
Right.
It'd been, gone into receivership, both lender and the owner, and after doing an appraisal of the property, going inside the property, it'd been torn up so much inside by people, squatters who had gotten in there to break, you know, tear out copper and all, that they determined it was no value there, so they, both the lender and borrower walked, or the lender and the owner, which was the borrower, walked away from the property, leaving it up to the Secretary of State. We went through a long process with the O Hotel. We also went through a process with the Briarwood One Building, and they're, both of them ended up getting torn down, and the one, the O Hotel, cost to see money. This is probably gonna end up costing us money as well because both the owners and the lenders have walked away from it. We've got to figure out, we've got, we've come up the learning curves away with those two incidents, or those two situations. We've got to be more responsive quicker and understand the legal, you know, tools we've got to address this. Judge Reynolds, I think, was the one that pressed on the O Hotel to help, so that we don't spend millions of dollars tearing down buildings that the owners have left and lenders have left for us to oversee. And so, you're, you're gonna have to have a special task force to help with us with the legal challenges, to make sure that we can act quickly to address the situation so hopefully, the people who own the property are the ones that are paying to get it cleaned up.
When there's money there that's available, we want to go get it, because the city shouldn't have to be paying for all of that.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments? All right, Mr. Martin, you know, you're all right with me. You're very responsive, and I try to tell this to every director, be responsive to council members. I know we can be a little naggy sometimes, we want what we want when we want it, but the fact that you respond, it means a lot. In the short period of time that you've been with us, you've saved us a lot of money. You've gotten a lot of cases thrown out, you've gotten some settled. I don't know if it's your wife, Greta, telling you what to say in court, I don't know. He's married to a lawyer too, y'all. But you're okay with me, and so, you know, I think you're gonna be all right. And like Mr. Stokes said, I would like to see that VIDOC issue, Walter Dutch Welch handled, and a few more things, and probably a tougher stance on some of these property owners that, you know, like the Texaco and Mega Evers and a few others that I fight almost on a daily basis. But having said that, all in favor? Six-zero, congratulations. Now, who did you bring with you today?
Thank you. Last time, I had some people here for me, and I said nothing, so I've heard about that a few times. So, let me first thank the people in my department that came, because there's several that came to support, and I appreciate everybody that did. I mentioned a couple of you that aren't here, my brother lives in Oakland, so he couldn't be here. My two younger children are in school, so they couldn't be here. But otherwise, this is my family. This is, this is my mother, my father, my wife, Greta. This is David and Diane, my father and mother. Greta's my wife, Janelle is my other wife, and Cassie.
That's illegal.
It's a joke.
Again, thinking, all of our city legal staff, if you would just please stand.
That's Miss Carrie.
I just want to say this. Especially for those that are watching, our city attorney's office is operating like a standalone law firm. The money that these folks make compared to the effort they put in on a daily basis is nothing. And I wish we can give y'all a million dollars apiece, we can't. We can't. But we can't give you half either. But again, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for everything that you do for this city. Thank you. Let's go ahead with number eight, please.
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Lorenzo Anderson P. as Director of Department of Public Works for the City of Jackson, Mississippi.
So moved. Second. It's been moved improperly, second. This will be interesting. We're gonna start with ward one. Mr. Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for being here. The, I've got several questions, but I'll start with the first one, and that is, could you tell us in three minutes or less, why you're qualified to be the public works director of the biggest city in the state of Mississippi?
Yes, sir. At the first, I'd like to thank the mayor for the nominee, nomination, thank the council for the time. I'm qualified, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Mississippi. I have nearly 25 years' experience in engineering and management and primarily municipal government. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I was born in Orange Mountain, Memphis, Tennessee. Was the first neighborhood in the nation to be built by African-Americans, so that innovation and resilience is in me to build in challenging situations. I went to Tennessee State University with an engineering degree 20-plus years ago. It just in me to be that person to build. I've done this so long, I've had experience in drainage, sewer, water, streets, you name it, I've seen it all, bridges. I've been the person in the bucket truck fixing the light, I've been the person behind a striping machine, putting stripes on the road. I actually walked every street in some of the municipalities that we had, looking at potholes, walked every mile of it. So, that was in my younger days, my knees are not that good anymore, but it's just something that I know from the ground up, what it takes to build a city.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I got some additional questions here. You, I just came from the City of Laurel, where you were the public works director, is that correct?
I was previously the public works director and city engineer in Laurel in 2019. Since then, I've been in a private consulting firm. We've been working primarily in Washington County.
Okay, so in Laurel, when you were the public works director, how many employees did the public works department have?
Seventy.
Seventy, okay. And how many crews did y'all put out on the street to fix potholes and resurface roads?
Well, we used a, in public works, we had one crew, street crew. That crew had different vehicles, I would say, and we use a combination of private and public works. We had like an annual paving program, with that paving program, it allowed us to have new streets that we can't do in-house, and I believe in using in-house resources. It saves the taxpayers dollars, but in that case, you can't do everything at once, so I say crew, I mean supervisor, and he probably had like 15 to 20 employees. But utilizing... It saves the taxpayers dollars, but in that case, you can't do everything at once, so I say crew, I mean supervisor, and he probably had like 15 to 20 employees. But utilizing, making sure they're efficient is the key in any crew, just multiply that by 10 or 20, wherever the council, the mayor appoints me.
Okay. So one of my concerns I have with Public Works, it's a big job, it's going to be a tough job, because we've lost a lot of the institutional knowledge that we had five, 10 years ago. And so, we also, I think the employee count's 174, so that's a little more than you had in Laurel. But I'm frustrated that we don't have more crews out every day fixing potholes ourselves. Fortunately, we got the county's going to help us with some of their crews. And one of the things I would encourage you to do is look at your org chart for the Public Works Department. Now, we don't have water or sewer anymore, but we should even be able to focus more on potholes, roads resurfacing, and bridges and drainage, because of, that's fewer duties, but we still have critical to the quality of life in the city. So I would encourage you to look at the organization chart and see how you can maximize the people out there at the point of the spear, who are filling potholes and resurfacing roads and addressing, you know, doing work to, you know, improve the drainage across the city. And it's a big job, the, I'm, you know, do everything I can on the council side to support that with equipment and other resources, so that you have, that you can build up and have a team that's ready to go to war against potholes, or war against bad streets, and war against blight.
Yes, sir.
That's all the questions I got right now.
All right, ward three.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, your resume is excellent. If the federal judge decided that the city of Jackson could have the water and sewer system again, could you handle that situation?
Yes, sir. I've dealt with water and sewer 20-plus years. I know what it takes to use technology to be proactive, so the city of Jackson is not in that situation again. I've dealt with EPA, Department of Health, I've dealt with a lot of entities that will, and federal funding on grants, and working with the grant writer to prevent anything to. I look at water and sewers as another asset, asset like you have your people, asset like you have your streets, asset like you have your drainage. It's managing asset. If your asset is depreciating, you have to have a plan in place and know where you are in the condition of your asset to move forward. And that'll be one of the first thing I would do to assess where, what assets do we have, how much does it cost to fix them, what's the condition of it. So, yes, sir, I can handle it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for bringing someone to be the Public Works Director, to move us toward moving back in control of our water sewer system. We have someone that's qualified, he's educationally qualified, he's experienced qualified, and I believe he can really run the water system. The people who rent in the ground, they're no longer in this city anymore, so it's time for people to start talking about the city of Jackson taking over their water system again and running it the right way, so these citizens won't be punished like they've been punished. My second question, Mr. President, I had a chance to go to Washington County, to the other Bluesfests, I presented Bobby Rush a plaque, and the roads are great, in the city, the county, Leland and all these places. You know, Councilman Foot brought up a concern about the streets in Jackson. Now, with the county, the city of Jackson pays 70% of the county taxes. We pay over, way over what the county is paying, but we're not getting enough help from the county. In your experience, because we got a lot of potholes, a lot of streets need to be paved. In the old days, the county would get a list from the city about the streets which need to be paved, instead of these supervisors just decide. Because in District Five, our supervisor has not and will not pave streets in Jackson, and that's wrong. But Graham paving a lot of them and others. So what I'm saying, how can you work with the Heinz County Board of Supervisors and make sure we can get more money and more things done to pave streets? Because these streets are in Jackson, but they're in Heinz County, and the city of Jackson paying the majority of Heinz County taxes.
I already have a relationship with the Public Works Director now, so, and I have a relationship with the mayor and the council, where I think it's a team effort on knowing what your constituents want. What we know is engineering as far as the actual condition of the roads. And we also have to look at traffic counts too, that's one thing we consider in assessment of the priorities. And I've worked for the county, so I know how the requests come in, and I'll just work with the Public Works Director, engineer, or their president on us presenting, you know, what we think as far as engineering, and everyone just getting together to make the list, and the list that we choose, how does it affect the overall condition of the system of roads? And that way, we'll know we're moving forward. I constantly want us to be looking at the condition to see that we're moving in the right direction, so I don't want it concentrated in just one area, I want it spread out, as far as traffic counts, because the more people that drive over a road, the more people affected. And not only, but everyone pays taxes, so everyone should have their fair share on getting their road done, but just have a plan in place. I love that idea, most municipalities and counties, they sometimes don't work together, but in my experience, you know, you can't make it work, but you have to have two willing participants, and I'm glad that the city of Jackson and the county is working together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, ward five.
Mr. Anderson, first of all, I've had some phone calls, some folks are very, very supportive of you.
All right, thank you.
In this process. And I will be meeting with you later as Chair of the Public Works Committee. We'll sit down and have some decent discussions. Your first drive through Jackson, what was your first impression?
I'll be 100% honest.
I need, that's the only, that's the only way I want this question.
I've been coming from Greenville to Jackson many years, and I could take 49 Mega Evers, and it was potholes on it, but I understood the, well, I thought as an engineer, I understood that it was a concrete street up under the pavement. And with that, it, and that's my understatement, that's how I think of what caused the street to be like that, and it was years ago, before I even thought about, you know, the Public Works position. And I understand that a long time ago, like, concrete streets, they were, concrete was cheaper, and that was the way to do it, but the concrete joints spread and once you put asphalt over. And I saw that problem on the street that I drove. But I like Jackson, I just come to Jackson all the time, shopping. Jackson's a good place, like I said in my introduction, Jackson is historical, and I know about historical places, I know the demographics of Jackson. It's a capital, everyone comes to Jackson.
Okay, but from a professional standpoint, you're a public works person.
Yes, sir.
Within the last few weeks driving through our city, what jumped out at you?
The potholes, the barrels, the water and sewer, which I've seen that on the news, but it's work to be done. And I knew, I know it was a challenge, I knew when I signed up for it, it was a challenge, I saw potholes. I know the infrastructure has deteriorated, but I see hope, I see possibilities of getting it better.
Okay, and I certainly appreciate it. When I first came here, I worked for solid waste, and I had them to take me to the worst area, and they did. It was the world's capital street, and it gave me a bar, okay? And I don't want to belabor, and I might come back around and ask you another question, but what's your relation, what do you think about our solid waste picture? We have a landfill, we have Environmental Service Center that takes the household hazardous waste, we have roll-off trucks, it's going to be a lot. Have you worked with DEQ before, and have you worked around the solid waste management area?
Yes, Greenville had a 20 million gallon, I know it's smaller than Jackson, but 20 million gallons a day wastewater treatment plant. Solid waste, we did it in Laurel, where we work with DEQ, making sure that we don't have assessed land that they already designate us, that we do not go outside the area, they take it very serious. We've worked with solid waste and land debris on, I'd say disasters, because it increases once you have a disaster, like a tornado or flash flooding. We work with different entities on that, so my experience is make sure you follow the rules, make sure that you don't get an EPA decree, make sure you don't, make sure you don't, you just follow the rules. The EPA, any federal government, they lay it out for you, you know, so present that in a way for the employees to know that how serious it is, it's not something that you want, it's something you have to do.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, ward six.
Thank you, thank you. What strategy do you have that, the plan that you have to make sure each ward get what they need with the manpower that you have?
Call, the office called me, communicate with what your concerns are, let the, whatever the protocol is for the most efficient way, I have to learn everyone's style of communication. Everyone has a different style of communication, some people may not prefer email, some people may not prefer text, some people may want to make a phone call, so I don't know, but I plan on finding out what they are, and just communication, you know, it's part of communication, and you all represent, the mayor represents the city, the citizens, I look at, you know, a couple thousand people every time I see one of y'all, so, or tens of thousands, and just communication.
Thank you.
All right, ward seven.
Thank you. What would your goals or objectives be with the department?
Like, the first would be assessment, making sure what we have, I know it needs to be improved, what we need to do to improvement. Second is efficiency, to make sure that what we have now, before I ask for anything, I'm making sure what we have is efficient. Make sure phone calls are returned, make sure people understand what we're doing, that implement new ideas, just making sure that the public knows that Public Works is here to serve them, and not, and the best way to communicate that, I already talked to the Communication Director, on ways that we can improve communication, like he said, the website and stuff like that. I think some people just don't know, you know, what we're doing behind the scenes, and I think communication is key to making sure the public knows that Public Works is working efficiently in what we have.
Great. You've addressed this already a little bit, but I want to just stress the importance of why I'm going to ask it again. 90% of the calls that I receive are going to be about two things, they're going to be about crime and safety, or they're going to be about public works. Occasionally, I'll get, how do I apply for a passport, or I have a zoning issue, I have the, occasionally, you're going to get other things. But 90% of the calls that I get, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree, is either a crime and safety issue, or an issue of public works. So with that in mind, if confirmed, how will you work with the council?
I know those calls, the calls come a lot, especially when middle of night, something, the traffic like them shut down, a tornado is coming.
You ain't saying nothing yet.
Water, it's a lot. I've watched the news, you know, we get the news in my area too, so making sure that it's handled, it makes your communication, and making sure that, that you all know that we're working on it. I mean, I'm just going, we're going to have a system in place, I figured out the best way to have a system in place, this is not something new, it's not going to be the first time we get, you know, 200 phone calls in a day. What's the system that we have to handle 200, 1,000, you know, 2,000 phone calls in a day? Because on some regular days, you may have only 200, but when times comes when emergencies, it may spike up to 2,000, let's have a system in place and handle it, don't wait till it happens, be proactive in having the system in place.
You, this would be a new role, you'd be coming into a new city, a new municipality, that's not new to you, you've gone into Washington County, you've gone into Laurel, you've gone into these other places. So given your experience of entering a new place, what sort of runway would you ask for? I mean, we're gonna, it's going to take you a while to find the coffee machine, it's going to take you a while to, you know, figure out how we do procurement and things like that. But given, I mean, when you step into a new role, do you want a grace period of a week, of 30 days, 60 days, do you need a year? What sort of grace period do you feel like this is what it would take me to truly feel like I'm the department head, and I can start making moves, and start putting plans in action, and start making things happen?
I won't ask for a grace period, because once I start working, I mean, the problems don't, the problems don't know what a grace period is, if, you know, it starts flooding tomorrow, I'm going, I'm going to have to handle it. So I already know when, I would say, problems don't have jurisdiction, they don't know if it's happening in Jackson, know if it's happening in Greenville. A pothole is a pothole, they don't know if it's in California. So it's going to be the same pothole, we're going to fix it. The time to assess the people, yes, I'm going to need some time to understand the dynamics of the people, the expertise of the people, which I will heavily rely on. I'm going to call former Public Works Director, you know, sometimes in emergency, we call on each other, because it's, you know, we, as engineers, we take an oath, you know, to serve the public. So we just want to make sure the public is safe, so I'm going to do that. It's just, I'm going to hit the ground, I'm going to come hard soon, day one, so, I mean, I'm not asking for a grace period.
Well, we appreciate it. I appreciate the chance to visit with you yesterday. I mean, this is just going to be a big challenge. If you feel up to the challenge, I trust the mayor's recommendation, and we got a lot, we got a lot of public works projects to address. I appreciate you being here, and you'll have my vote, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Harley?
I think he was first.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. The follow-up question, the, Mr. Anderson, one of the areas that, I'm not sure if it's going to be under your jurisdiction or not, but it's an area that needs a lot of attention, is the motor pool out on Michael Avalon, which is close to the Hawkins Field. And it's, we need a better operating, functioning motor pool that really has a great program for fixing stuff that gets broken, equipment that gets broken. Too often, the VAC trucks, which are expensive vehicles, as you well know, break down, and then they might sit there for six months or something, waiting for a part or whatever, and that limits their ability to go out and service the drainage needs in some of these ditches that get, you know, backed up. So I'd encourage you, if you end up with jurisdiction with a motor pool, make sure you've got somebody really good running it and focused on fixing things and keeping vehicles up and running that serve the Public Works Department. Mr. Harley's working really hard on getting new equipment that will be available for the Public Works Department, but it's critical that we have good-trained operators to use that equipment, so it's well taken care of and don't just end up, you know, back in the repair shop somewhere, sitting, waiting for parts to come in.
Yes, sir.
But it's critical, we want the, this council wants to give you the resources, so you can accomplish your mission, and you got to let us know, you know, what they might be as they arise, and, you know, I wish you the best of luck, it's going to be a challenging job, but, you know, I know you're going to work hard at it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, Mr. Harley?
Yes, Mr. Anderson, and again, we'll visit later and work out a lot of issues, but did have one more follow-up question, and that is, a lot of, you know, a lot of the public works folks work in austere conditions, a lot of them work for low wages. How do you look to lead and motivate this group of people? Uh, how do you look to lead and motivate, uh, this group of people, one of the largest block of, of workers within the city, the biggest department?
Um, yes, I understand about the, the lower wages, um, but at every point, every employee signed up for, you know, to be employee of the city of Jackson, you know? And at that point, um, it was a certain wage. Uh, now, if you've been here and you had some tenure, I understand, you know, we're going to work some things out. We, we, we're going to restructure some stuff around, uh, in Public Works. And to motivate is, you know, be firm, uh, but be fair. I'm going to be fair to employees, I'm going to talk to them, I'm not going, talk to them as, I'm going to talk to them as a person, uh, first, uh, that's, you know, in the managing position, you have to love people, you have to be able to serve people. And, um, you're servicing city of Jackson, you know, you, you're doing a service and it's not about, uh, a I, it's about a team. So, uh, let's do the best that we can. You have to be self-motivated, I'm looking for self-motivated people. Um, and, um, we're just going to, we through the people and see who really want to be here and serve the people. Um, I want to encourage, you know, everyone to be motivated, uh, to, if they're here already, you know, they already, um, been hired and, and they come to work every day and do their job. Um, let's find those people and keep them working and encouraging, uh, incentives. I would say, um, it's something that I could do as a manager to, to encourage, uh, I would say, everything's not monetary, but, uh, that's important, I would say. And I'm going to be asking if needed, you know, uh, what we can do because I'm pretty sure we have a certain amount of budget. I've did, I've taken, um, I would say cuts, you know, I understand when there's a budget crisis. I've done it nearly twenty-five years, um, you know, two thousand eight, uh, two thousand twenty, um, COVID. So I understand when texts, taxes get low. Uh, that doesn't mean that you jump ship, it mean that you, you know, buckle down, boots on the ground and keep on serving.
Yeah, I think, um, one of the things is they're going to be looking for leadership and role models and you are the, you're tip of the spear. You are a warrior. Councilman Foot mentioned war and yeah, we have a lot going on here trying to make the city a lot better. And one of the things is being that role model and, uh, in all things. The other thing, the last thing I have is solid waste. Right now we have a landfill out in Balm Area. Uh, it's been closed for a while, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, there's equipment needs to be ordered, but it is vital to the city that we get that thing up and running because as we look to clean up, as we look to have, uh, these blighted properties cleaned up and waste removed, we need a rubbish site that's functional, uh, and that we can, number one, we'll be saving money, but we need, as we clean up the entire city, this waste needs someplace to go.
Yes, sir.
And as cheaply as possible. So, uh, I think that's going to be one of those priority areas for you that I look forward to discussing with you.
Yes, sir.
Look forward to supporting you, sir.
All right, are there any more questions? All right, Mr. Anderson, um, other than you being a Tennessee State grad?
Tiger.
Well, we real tigers up here, but, um, because we know y'all couldn't hold Southern Haters classically, like you said. But, um, Councilman Stokes been really preaching the need for, uh, an engineer to be our Public Works Director. And so, um, I think you answered one of his prayers. Um, and I've gotten a lot of calls in support of you and so because of that, you have my support today, but I will ask, like I do of all the directors, please be responsive and accessible. Each one of us got roughly twenty-one thousand residents, I got twenty-two thousand and some change, okay? Got a lot of flooding in a lot of our neighborhoods and so when the rains come, we need somebody who can respond.
Yes, sir.
And who can get people out there to respond because, you know, I even had a constituent who's eighty-four years old and took out gallons and gallons of water, uh, that was caused by a ditch behind her home that she'd been, uh, complaining about for six years, okay? And so that's just my only, my only ask, be responsive and, um, you know, and be accessible, so.
Yes, sir, we will.
Anything else? All right. I think Jackson State has a graduate program in engineering. All in favor? All right, we go. Congratulations. Is you bringing anybody here with you today?
Thank you, thank you. Yes, I have my, uh, my ladies, uh, my, my son, um, he, he's three years old, uh, he probably interrupted, um, the session by calling out daddy, so...
He's been here the whole time?
No, he's three, he's in Greenville.
Oh, okay.
Oh, my lady. Emily Simmons, she's here with, from Texas.
Hello.
All right.
All right, well, I guess that's it. Congratulations, sir. We'll be calling you very soon. All right. Now we're down to number ten, the judiciary.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Before we take up the judicial nominations, I wanted to, uh, inform the council that we found out very late, uh, a day or so ago, that we have to take up these judicial nominations. Otherwise, um, the, uh, the, the court will shut down because the judges will not be able to be paid because they're beyond the ninety-day...
Right.
Uh, uh, the ninety-day period. Uh, so we're, we're still evaluating the court system and are, are making assessments as to whether we need to have some judges go full-time versus part-time. The administration of, of the municipal court is also under review. So I beg the, the council's indulgence on getting late notice about, uh, these appointments coming up because it hit us by, a little bit by surprise when we realized that, uh, there was a payment issue that was, um, that was at hand. So, uh, we will beg the council's indulgence.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask to be excused, there's a time-sensitive letter I need to send that has to do something with the city's finances, so I'm going to ask to be excused and go handle that.
Well, you are the C A O. Yes, sir. Clerk?
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Tarn Buchanan, Kevin Bass, Lily Bass, June Hardwick, Jeffrey Reynolds and Virginia Watkins as municipal judges for the Jackson Municipal Court, Jackson, Mississippi.
So, uh, second. It's been moving improperly, second. Are there any judicial candidates here? I know Judge Hardwick reached out to me and she's traveling, um, they received late notice. Mayor, you, would you like to speak to any of these or...
Just to say that they serve at the will and pleasure of the mayor. Uh, we're still evaluating the courts and, um, uh, we'll be making some permanent, or well, some lasting decisions very shortly.
All right, thank you. Ward one, anything next to mayor?
The, so there's nobody we can question here?
No.
Well, I just think, if I remember correctly, I will make one comment. I believe it was Judge Jeff Reynolds that worked so hard to get, um, was it the Rye Wood one building torn down? And, uh, he sent a good, what's that? And the whole hotels, well, that's great. That, that, that's, we need, and we need to learn from that and be really proactive to address these things as soon as possible and be, and, and if we need to put different ordinances in place to, to, so he gives us more clout to make this happen quicker, I think we should pursue that as well. Maybe the city attorney can, can help us in that regard because we, really, this is a huge problem that is eating away at our neighborhoods and our communities and, and they deserve, it does, the problem deserves a big, a big, uh, a lot of our attention and if whatever we can do legally and with judges like, uh, Judge Reynolds, um, maybe we can get this thing better under control. Thank you so much.
President, I'll, I'll just say that as it relates to blight, one of the things that we, we, we know that we can have an impact on is the, uh, number of asbestos inspections that go on. State law only requires you to have inspections on four, of a, a development that has four units or more. We've been doing asbestos inspections on every single demolition project that comes up to. So we know that we can, we can, uh, deal with that. And we're also, uh, going to be going to the state legislature to see if we can get them to, for populations in excess of a hundred thousand, uh, to be able to do a quick take on properties that are dilapidated and obviously not reparable, uh, and hopefully be able to take those builders down a lot faster than we are able to right now.
No questions, Ward Three.
All right, Ward Four, I mean, uh, Ward Five.
Yeah, just, uh, I recognize a couple folks on the list, Kevin Bass, I worked with him when I was an airport commissioner out at the airport, very professional, very well-grounded, and Ms. June Hardwick, Hardwick, uh, from, um, initially from my ward, uh, very hard worker, conscientious person and very much tied into the community. That's all.
All right, Ward Six.
No comments.
Ward Seven.
No questions.
All right, for me, my only concern, um, and I like our judges, but we got one or two who gives extremely low bonds to some of these defendants that go before them. And I understand what bond is for, you know, I understand the vocabulary, I don't need to get jumped on by any lawyers, but we need to show a stronger force here in the city of Jackson, just like they do in Pearl and Madison and everywhere else, when it comes to people who are committing crimes in this city and making sure that we send the message that Jackson is not open for crime. And that's my only concern, my only concern. And Judge Reynolds, I think he's probably one of the toughest. Uh, he handles environmental court, no issues with him whatsoever, but we just want to make sure that of course, when they call the balls and strikes that we're giving, we're sending a message with these bonds. Because of course, they'll probably get it, uh, adjusted when they get to Circuit Court, but for us, we need to make sure that we're sending a message consistently that we're not open for crime.
We, we get that loud and clear as well and that is being factored into our consideration of the future of the court.
Very nice, very good. All right, any more questions or concerns? Hearing the, all in favor of, how many? Six? Six judges? All right. Well, congratulations to them if they're watching. All right, so moving on, are there any reports, anything that, that needs to come before this body in announcements?
Just, uh, remind everybody that the, uh, Mississippi's One Major League Sports Event starts in two days in Ward One on the Jackson Country Club.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Does Stokes have anything?
No, sir.
All right, anybody else? No? All right, hearing the, all of, well, we're adjourned. Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor?
I was just going to say that while we were here with our council considerations, uh, we might have just made, um, Mr. Anderson's job a little easier, we just signed on a forty million dollar bond issue.
Nice. So that mean these ditches about to get cleaned down, these roads and bridges?
We're going to be focused on ditches, drainage, uh, street and, uh, bridge repair.
Shaw road?
Shaw road's on the list.
Very good, all right. Anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, colleagues.